Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. I'm Jared Kilhulale, Chair of the CPN Committee. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will try to reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, February 23 at 9:35 a.m. and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. As is our normal practice, if you're online, welcome. Your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. As is our practice in this committee, you have two minutes to testify. We have received and I have read all of your written submitted testimony. So I'd encourage you to stand on your testimony in order to ensure that we have enough time. It's a 90-minute here. I'd like to make sure we have enough time for everyone to testify. But if you do wish to make clarifying remarks or any specific additions that were not included in your written testimony, please feel free to utilize your two minutes. And let's begin. First measure on the agenda is SB 395 relating to real property transactions. This measure requires a seller or its agent in a residential real property transaction to disclose that the United States Postal Service cannot deliver mail or packages to the residential real property being offered for sale. A first and only testifier, Hawaii Realtors with comments.
Thank you, you stand on our testimony.
Good morning, thank you for standing on your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, members, any questions for the Realtors? Okay, we'll move to the next measure, SB 474 relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This measure requires the PUC to issue a decision within six months from the date that a public utility has filed a financial application request to enter into any stock, certificates, bonds, notes, and other indebtedness arrangements. First up, PUC with comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Daniel Park on behalf of the PUC. I stand on the commission's written testimony and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Division of Consumer Advocacy with comments.
Aloha and good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Dean Nishina with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand in our written testimony offering comments. I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Gas with comments. Okay, that's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? All right, moving along, SB 476 relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This exempts a public utility from the required Public Utilities Commission authorization when disposing of a fully depreciated asset or property with a zero net book value. PUC with comments.
Hi, Daniel Park again for the PUC. Stand on the commission's written testimony and available for questions.
Thank you very much. Division of Consumer Advocacy with comments.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Dean Nishina. Stand on our written testimony, offering comments, available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wine Electric in support.
Morning Chair, Members of the Committee, James Abraham on behalf of Wine Electric. We are in support of SB 476 and will stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, members, any questions?
Yeah, Chair. Go ahead. I think this would be for the PUC, but the Dean Nishina.
Good morning, yes, what's your question?
Yeah, clarify, you said it may be contrary to the public's best interest. Could you clarify that, please?
Well, as I tried to articulate in our written testimony, there are times when an asset may have a net book value of zero, which means that it's fully depreciated in terms of financial accounting. But the asset is still valuable. It still can be used and useful for a utility service. So if the utility is able to sell that asset without commission review, even though there's still useful life remaining, that would potentially be contrary to consumers' interests. Because if the utility is just going to turn around and buy a new asset, even though the old asset, which is again, net book value zero, but still has useful life, that means utility rates will be higher when it's replaced maybe prematurely. And then the other way that is also against consumers' interests, there are times that even though it's fully depreciated, there's a market value to it. So that when it's sold, there could be a profit on it. And if it's sold without commission approval, we won't have the opportunity to review it to see whether there is a profit that could be used and reflected in the benefits of consumers where that profit would be used to reduce revenue requirements.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next measure, which is SB 477, again relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This measure requires the PUC to complete its review and issue a decision within nine months from the date that a public utility, other than an investor-owned electric utility company, files its completed application seeking approval for a merger, consolidation, acquisition, or other change of control and within 12 months from the date of the application for an investor-owned electric utility company. PUC with comments.
Good morning, Daniel Park again for the PUC. Stand on the commission's written testimony and available for comments.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Park. We don't have your video, but standing on your comments. Division of Consumer Advocacy again with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. You have our written testimony on which we stand. But if I can offer a couple of quick comments, it's through these transfer of control dockets that we're often able to secure additional benefits on behalf of consumers. For instance, when Kauai Island Utility Cooperative acquired the assets from Kauai Electric, subsidiary of Citizens Communications Company, we were able to secure patronage credits for the customers, which over the years have been millions of dollars. Most recently, in the Hawaii Gas Transfer of Control, we were able to secure $7 million of a customer appreciation credit. And again, if there's insufficient time to try to negotiate these types of benefits for consumers, we may not be able to get those same type of benefits on a going-forward basis. And on that, I'm available for questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Life of the Land, Mr. Curtis, in opposition.
Aloha, Committee Members, Henry Curtis, Life of the Land. The next year acquisition or attempted acquisition of HECO involved 28 parties, took a year and a half. Under this proposed legislation, there was a law at that time who had been interrupted right in the middle. I don't know if it would have been applicable to KIUC that stretched over two years in two separate dockets, but it seems to me that the history shows that this bill should not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaiian Telcom in support.
Chair, we stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we have registered. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, any questions? Vice Chair.
See, I guess this question would be for Mr. Nishina of the Consumer Advocate. Can you provide kind of a listing of the number of cases which exceeded the 12-month timeframe over the last five years?
I can't provide that off the top of my head, but if it's acceptable, I can collate those numbers and provide it to the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next measure. SB 1325 relating to Money Transmitters Modernization Act. This measure continues the alignment of Hawaii's Money Transmitters Law with the provisions of the Model Money Transmitters Modernization Act. First up, DCCA, Division of Financial Institutions, in support. All right, Gerard Silva in opposition. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, we'll move on, seeing as there's no one present to ask questions. SB 1578 relating to cable television systems. Oh, I'm sorry, did we have someone? Hello.
Hi, Chair. This is for SB 1578.
Got it, thank you. Okay. 1578 relating to cable television systems. This adds additional considerations for the Director of Commerce and Consumer Affairs to take into account when ensuring that the terms and conditions required for operation of an access organization are fair to the public in its designated service area. It also requires cable operators to include viewership numbers in its reports to the DCCA. DCCA with comments.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Jamie Shum, the acting Cable Administrator. The department stands on its written testimony and is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. And next we have Olo Community Media in support. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Wes Okwene, Director of Operations, Olo Community Media. We stand on the written testimony and are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And next we have Charter Communications in opposition.
Good morning, Felipe Munroa with Charter Communications. We stand on our written testimony and are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I believe that's all the registered testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess. Okay, coming back in on our 9:30 a.m., February 21 CPN agenda, the first measure on the agenda is SB 395 relating to real property transactions. This is the measure that relates to disclosure of postal service at property sales. The recommendation on this measure is to move this measure out over to the House to keep the discussion going with a defective effective date of July 1, 2050. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, SB 395 passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
All right.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 474 relating to the PUC. There was no definitive support on this measure. There are a number of these timeline measures that are working. So the recommendation here is to defer. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the SB 476 relating again to the PUC. This is the measure that exempts public utilities from obtaining required authorization when disposing of a fully depreciated asset. The recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will adopt both the PUC and Consumer Advocate proposed amendments and defect the effective date to July 1, 2050 and see if we can have the language sorted out as we move through the process. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Okay, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 477, again related relating to the PUC. This has to do with timeline for reviews on mergers, consolidations, and acquisitions. The recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will adopt the PUC's requested amendment requiring a report to the legislature and we will amend the shall requirement in this measure to say that the commission shall make every effort to complete its review within the prescribed time. We'll also add a defective effective date of July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, SB 477, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Reservations?
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Thank you, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 1325. This is relating to the Money Transmitters Modernization Act. The recommendation here is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will amend references to an act on page eight, line nine, to instead refer to the chapter in the code, which I believe was a, which we believe is a necessary conforming amendment since this is a model bill. We'll also defect the effective date to July 1, 2050 and there are some technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, SB 1325, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Okay, measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. This next measure, SB 1578 relating to cable television systems. The recommendation is as follows. We will amend the measure to apply the proposed criteria just to the packs, which I believe was the intended purpose of the measure. We'll also defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now adjourn this measure and reset to take on the 10:00 a.m. decision-making agenda. Adjourn. Aloha and good morning to this 10:00 a.m. decision-making agenda for the Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. In the unlikely event that we need to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will try to reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, February 23 at 9:35 a.m. We're taking up a number of measures for decision-making that were heard in a prior committee. We also received written testimony that has been made available to the members and posted on the legislature's website. The first measure on the agenda is SB 1344 S D 1 relating to educational health services. This measure allows the administration of medication to public school students by health assistance with the approval of a healthcare professional within the Department of Education, Department of Health, or a healthcare service per a written agreement with the DOE. It also replaces the term "school health aides" with "school health assistants" to reflect recent changes to the job title. Members, the recommendation is to adopt the proposed amendments from the epilepsy foundation and to make a conforming amendment to HRS 88-21 regarding the term "assistant" versus "aid." So we are going to clear out all references to "health aides" and replace them with "assistants." We'll also defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050 to encourage further discussion. And there are some technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 72 S D 1 relating to renewable energy. This measure proposes that beginning July 1, 2023, the PUC is required to render decisions on certain renewable projects, PPAs, and cost recovery applications within 180 days of the filing of the application. It also exempts certain PPAs from the PUC commission, from the PUC review and approval process in certain circumstances. And for rate-making proceedings, requires the PUC to complete its deliberations and issue a decision before six months from the date a public utility has filed its application for approval. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments. We will accept all of the PUC's proposed amendments, beginning with the amendments to Section 2A, which make clarifying amendments that establish criteria for the timeline to be set in place, to 2B, which makes similar criteria clarifications, and the proposed amendment to Section 3, which keeps the timeline at nine months. We will also defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050 to encourage further discussion. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes with reservations. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Thank you, the measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 690 S D 1 relating to energy efficiency. This measure prohibits the sale of certain fluorescent lamps as a new manufactured product with certain exemptions. The recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will adopt the requested amendments from the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. This relates to fluorescent lights that have no alternative technology to replace them. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 691 S D 1 relating to efficiency standards. This measure allows the Chief Energy Officer of the Hawaii State Energy Office to enforce minimum efficiency standards and adopt or amend efficiency standards. It also sets minimum efficiency standards for air purifiers, electric vehicle supply equipment, portable electric spas, residential ventilating fans, toilets, urinals, and water coolers. The recommendation is to defer decision-making on this measure to Thursday, February 23 at 9:35 a.m. This is to consider the requested plumbing code amendments and make sure we have all the language settled appropriately. The next measure, SB 839 S D 1 relating to renewable energy. I'm also going to recommend that we defer decision-making on this measure to Thursday, February 23 at 9:35 a.m. in this room, just to make sure that we work out the proposed amendments. Next measure, SB 415 S D 1 relating to wages. This measure makes general contractors entering into or under contracts in the state for work on buildings, structures, or other private works liable for debt incurred by subcontractors for wages due to claimants for performance, for wages due to claimants for performance of labor in the contract between the general contractor and the owner. The recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will adopt the DLIR requested amendment, clarifying the definition of employer. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments. And the measure, I do want to note, already has a defective effective date. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Reservations?
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 1135 relating to procurement. This measure requires cash or protest bonds to be returned to the initiating parties minus administrative costs, except in cases where the appeal was frivolous or made in bad faith. The recommendation on this measure is to pass it out unamended. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, SB 1135, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 764 relating to affordable housing. This measure allows a bank to invest in aggregate up to 2% of the bank's total assets in limited partnerships, limited liability partnerships, limited liability companies, and corporations formed to invest in affordable housing residential properties. It also requires approval from the Commissioner of Financial Institutions to exceed this amount. The recommendation on this measure is to move this measure out with a defective effective date of July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair, SB 764, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 1462 S D 1 relating to limited-profit housing associations. This measure establishes an organizational and regulatory framework for limited-profit housing associations. The recommendation is to pass this measure out with amendments. We will make conforming amendments clarifying that the council makes the approval decisions that are identified in the bill. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments and we will defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
No.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 1057 S D 1 relating to employment earnings. This measure requires job listings to include an hourly rate or salary range. Recommendation is to defer decision-making on this measure to pursue a prior concurrence on some requested amendments. So we will defer decision-making until Thursday, February 23 at 9:35 a.m. in this room. Next measure, SB 1447 relating to tobacco products. This measure clarifies that county ordinances or regulations that regulate the sale of cigarettes, tobacco products, and electronic smoking devices are null and void only if they are in direct conflict with or less stringent than state law that governs smoking. It also clarifies that counties retain the authority to adopt ordinances that regulate the sale of cigarettes, tobacco products, and electronic smoking devices as long as the ordinances do not directly conflict with and are more stringent than provisions in state law that governs smoking. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments. We will adopt the American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network proposed amendments, repealing the entire section on page 5, lines 18 to page 6, line 2. So we're just going to delete that paragraph B, which will then clearly express that the counties can pass laws that are more stringent. We'll also defect the effective date on this measure to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, SB 1447, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator McKelvey is excused, Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Thank you, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. And the last measure on the agenda, SB 479 S D 1 relating to the Public, relating to the Public Utilities Commission. This measure removes the requirement that common water carriers receive approval from the PUC prior to executing a long-term lease of more than five years or a leveraged lease. It also requires common water carriers to receive approval from the PUC before entering into long-term leases of more than five years and leveraged leases of waterborne vessels. The recommendation is to defer decision-making on this. The recommendation is to defer decision-making on this measure to July twenty-third, that's Thursday, at nine-thirty-five A M in this room to consider prior concurrence for requested February twenty-third. We're going to vote on this on Thursday, February twenty-third at nine-thirty-five A M. Please disregard whatever it was that I just said that was different. On that note, we're adjourned. Thanks very much.